Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you you tell us.
Oh, we're good. What I got to start with is the courthouse roof. That I've gotten two quotes as long as yet. And that should be right there in your file. One from Atlas throughout Indy and one from uh Logan's out of South Bend. The atlas is twenty two thousand three hundred and six dollars. One out of South Bend, Logan's is time and material. Not to see sixty five hundred.
What did you say the first one was?
Because they're going to do time and material. The other just give me a quote for everything. That's even inspection of the roof, you know, the whole roof going to have inspected too. And once you get on the web, you know, we'll start telling what's up there when we get there.
Right.
So like. You know, I don't want to pay twenty two thousand dollars for somebody to come up there and cock a valley because there's a valley and a hit back.
That was one of the.
I listen to you because I have to do a lot of work on the roof. I just called him one voice today, probably twenty twenty one.
Twenty twenty one.
That was, I think, just to replace two roof tiles they wanted. We posted three grand for. So they've been they. They've been consistent in being expensive. Sixty five.
Yeah, where will that money come from?
Yeah, we've got. We've got a sizable courthouse maintenance fund.
He fills a sixty five hundreds.
I do. I feel pretty good because he's doing it, you know, time and material is just not overcharged us, you know, go repair what's bad and inspect the roof compared to. They're going to come here twenty two thousand and they're gonna maybe a little bit of cocking on today. I'm rich man now, you know.
Will they be providing a report of what's?
The inspection afterwards, yes.
But will they? As far as the cause of the leaks.
Yes.
Before they.
I'm going to request that, yeah.
Before they do the repair?
No, they're going to come in and repair it.
Okay.
It's getting. You know, winter time. Uh that was recommended to by South Bend Roofing Company. That's right, yeah, that's where I got those from.
I'll make the motion that we approve the bid from Morgan Roofing six for six thousand five hundred.
Second.
Where are you paying this out of?
The courthouse name that's fun. My item.
There's that up in there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know the exact count because.
Right.
Well, that's a big number.
Okay, now next we have the annex two building with doing some remodeling. Name their couple offices over there. Great point again, one is Lawton Daniels. Kind of report. Sixty five thousand five hundred and eighty five dollars. Happens. A demand. Fifty two thousand seven hundred and fifty. Then EMA and a Knox. With fifty six thousand one hundred and fifty seven.
Don't be any of them when they.
Most of them said after the uh the approval of the uh.
It's one here. Yeah, well, I mean, that's why I was trying to do the math to make sure we were within, because we got that. Again, on the first. I'm going to go with someone local if even if it's within a certain percentage. I could have you longer with that. Charlie, you guys.
I mean, it's nice to have somebody local.
Right, right.
And we do remember Frank's got twenty five or twenty six in his budget. We can go.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're using.
Yeah.
The public. For health. That we got, okay. I'll make the motion to accept the. Bid for EAM Construction for fifty six thousand one hundred and fifty seven dollars. For working former jail.
Second, well, second there on blue.
Is that something we had?
Do you remember that?
Was that on the on the N R P list?
Actually, I thought we talked about.
So this is for.
I think we ran out of money though, so I think we were going to take it out of CD.
Good Frank, Frank will have twenty five or twenty six out of his budget, that covers half.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
So you're going to pay this out of CD?
Yeah, half of it, half comes from Frank. On the new Indiana health thing, but yeah. Yeah, he has money in his budget.
As long as this doesn't bump it bumping into. The caps for capital improvements. Is there. Low restrictions on that?
You guys remember though. Because we didn't qualify for stellar, did we? End up spending all of that? That we were going to. I'll just throw it out there, you may want to make a conditional, just if there's any of that, take it, take it, take it from our part then if we didn't spend all of that. Yeah.
Did you hear that? My point.
If they didn't spend all stellar, take it out of there.
Yeah. The the ARPA, the stellar for from ARPA.
Yeah, because that was. Fifty seven.
Yeah, and I don't know that we spent it all because.
I don't think we spent fifty seven. Prepare most time.
No, I think it was just fifteen or something.
Something like that.
Uh so code that we already have done, I just need to know where to get the money from, it was already approved and.
I believe we uh. Said it was going to come out in cash.
Hey, concrete, Don wanted me to get some. Look at some concrete to go lift right there. Parking lot. There's annex one by the trash to curb, you can see a picture of it there I got for you. And then uh move the uh. Herb at the old jail. Ran to over to make another pocket spot. And if we renovate the. Back part of the old jail. That way I can take the sidewalk there straight up to there. Then uh west of the courthouse, the A B A ramp is pretty. Not A B A applied, so like to get that to pair up. And then uh. Concrete pad for the bison. Is one of the way everybody wants it. Yeah, what you decide. Uh the old memorial sidewall. That'd be five foot wide with two eighty rim successful. So.
On the toe, there you can get off.
And then we got some concrete over by the uh annex two building. But we're going to do that fifty fifty program with the kind of knocks in April. Just the annex two sidewalk goes down towards Finger Hut, the other couple never.
Oh, you guys don't get to take a bid on that stuff.
Yeah.
Or do we want to, do we want to decide on the world of the device? Not tonight.
Not tonight.
All right, we'll get some bids, but keep it in mind to my.
Yeah, just a pad, I won't get out, make out a pad for the size of the bison.
Yep.
And then where we got to put it, we'll go from there.
And tell them that could be or could not be, not sure.
Okay, last. Uh all the documents over the warehouse. I've been working on this for almost two years. Uh Mandy give us a quote from her company that she used. So.
He just have the letter.
It's three thousand dollars.
She said. Yeah, it it may seat six thousand though, it just depends on how much weight. Got eighteen pallets. Probably I'm figuring, I'm guessing around. Eighteen, twenty thousand pounds.
She gave me an additional appropriation to do for three thousand dollars, do I need to change it for six before, well, no, it's already advertised for the.
Yeah, it was already, it should be already, they should have paid for on six thousand. But that's just, I don't see the seating that much, I'm guessing around three thousand.
Well, we might have to do another additional then because she only told me three thousand and advertised for the next council meeting.
Well, I think we can authorize up to six and up, yeah, up to six and then if they need to go back. Through the process for additional appropriation, we can do that.
Twelve cents a pound.
You guys. And they rule it and create. Six up to six thousand.
Yeah. My motion to. Uh authorize. Use of up to six thousand dollars for. Document. Disposal. Through rapid trip.
Yeah.
What about the concrete? You didn't make a motion on that or that?
There's nothing. We're just, we're just going to let him start getting.
Don't interrupt, but uh Rick, is that free up the space we needed for city court documents or do you still need to add?
Yeah, I'm still working on ramp because I had the racking, not rings, but the uh.
Yeah.
It's unbroken, but he never delivered it.
Oh, okay, well, then you already had it going, I just.
We're going to do like we thought, we're going to stack.
Okay, good.
Clean and everything ready to go. Out right.
Yoni here.
Jody Klein did.
Mister appoint uh. Michael McKinney back on the Coon Lake sewer district. As we're, anybody else apply my my claim.
Not that, not to me, they didn't, I only got the one.
I'm Mike McKenna.
Okay.
I've been a board member and served the board as treasurer, Coon Lake Regional Sewer District. For almost twenty years now. Also serve as uh chairman of the nomination committee. And I'm here tonight to request the uh. Reappointment of Paul Warrenkey.
Okay.
Board of Commissioners have. Uh finding Mr. Warrenkey four times over the last seven years served. On the board. And through an error of mine, his term expired. Uh Mr. Warrenkey is uh. Has served as president of our board, enjoyed the unanimous support. And he also serves the district as. Compliance officer, ensuring that the new connections are made. According to ordinance and correctly according guidelines. Um in light of. Or commissioners test support of mystery, Mr. Warrenkey. And in that support of the Coon Lake Service Report. And his experience and knowledge, uh it is my hope that I can leave tonight with uh. Confirmation his reappointment for another four of your term.
We did get a letter from Mike and from Paul.
Make a motion.
Yeah, okay, fine. I'll make the motion uh to appoint. To uh Paul Warrenkey to the Coon Lake. Regional Sewer District. In the term to expire, is this correct here? December thirty first, twenty twenty six?
Either four years from today or if it's your pleasure, four years from the end of this year, which would put you more in line with. Your normal practice of making appointments in January. So from today to. December thirty first, two thousand. Would be suitable.
Two thousand, what did you say?
Twenty eight.
I'll second that.
Next thing on the agenda is old squad guard, we're going to have to build again, what we've got, we got eight old squad guards, we're going to. Down for scrap. We just now started getting all paperwork around. Now two weeks. Then we should be able to. Now, so right now we'll run table.
Thank you guys for.
Including me on agenda. I am just here simply to invite you. And uh public officials to a workshop coming up, it's going to be a joint workshop for Lascai County and Stark County. Public officials, community leaders um as. Mammoth Phase Two. Uh gets ready to move forward and so we are uh hosting a workshop. Again, for public officials, community leaders. And after this, we potentially will also be doing one for the communities. But uh this is where we're going to start, so I want to make sure you guys who are first on my list, uh you'll get a invite uh on your emails as well.
Do you have a copy of that?
I do, I have an extra one, uh Justin, if you want to copy.
Sure, thanks.
Sure, it'll be out at Bass Lake at the fire department. Feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions, uh I'm just right around the corner, so, all right, thank you.
There is going to talk about the handbook.
Our handbook, the flex time policy currently um. Has employees using that flex time within one work week. In the past, before the new handbook, um it was always the pay period. Um and I'm running into a few department heads and employees just having a little bit of. Time constraint with that work week, especially if it's later in the work week, um so I'm just asking if we can get the handbook updated for flex time to be used within the pay period.
And that will make it all eat to that part, right?
Yes. Yes, yeah, so just as long as when they earn that, that they use it within that same paper. Payroll. Just to make it.
That's that's pretty standard practice.
Yeah, I believe it was that way.
Yeah, I don't know why we didn't. Maintain that as far as the written policy, but this is. A good correction. Yeah, uh. Make the motion to amend. The handbook. Reflect the policy that. Flex time is to be used within the pay period accrued.
Second that.
On favor.
Well, thank you.
When you change the handbook, I'm like, we decided to change some stuff in there. Is there a certain timer, can we do it any given time?
Um I believe it's anytime, I don't know if we're still under her contract when she makes those changes.
Okay.
Um but typically I just send her um an email that the board voted to update that and then she has it back to me from the week usually. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Now on the holiday schedule.
Yes.
I know Mark already moved to mark off the one. The only reason we had put it on there is because you can't get any support from any vendors if we have a problem because they're all closed on that day. But Mark asked us to remove it, so.
Yeah, just because I like it. Reflect what the state holiday list is.
Oh, that's. Well, we're going to approve this.
Okay.
Minus. Make the motion that we approve the holiday schedule minus. Uh June nineteenth.
I'll second that.
Yoli is here, she thought the meeting didn't start till five thirty.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
All right, sorry. You made it before we adjourned, so.
Okay, that's good, thank you. Um so. We stood before you about two and a half years ago. Uh with a dream for a property that we had purchased um. About six months prior to that, so we're about three years now, I guess. We were supposed to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals, but it was decided that we should come here instead. Not sure what really brought that about, except the explanation was um unknown setbacks, so we were looking for a variance. Um but we had a property that. Was possibly inside of an Eastman that was all unknown, um so we were told to get a survey and we were told to come here. When we came here. Um we were charged with discovering what the property is, which now two and a half years later. That has been decided formally. Uh but at that time it was more, it was unknown, um and we were told to go to the plat room and call the local utility companies. And um try to figure that out. So we did those two things and there was no information um in the plat. And. Utility companies had no information. At that point, um. We have the survey, it looked that our property was. Um inside of this unknown thing, so like the corner of our house, so we had a bad property line and we had. No other avenues at that point, so the surveyor recommended that we hire an attorney. Um it made sense to us because it was way outside of our wheelhouse what to do next. Um and the recommendation was to do a quiet title on this. Piece of land. Um it appeared to be abandoned. Um I think is the word they use. And. To just move forward with. Giving that. Um they put together the paperwork, we. Called the building department to let them know that we would, that we had hired an attorney. Um and we also went to our. Neighbors that also bought up on this piece of land. Um to let them know that that's what we were doing and that they were interested in pursuing. A portion of that, the Indiana law kind of states it's divided. By the. People that border the property. That became. Something. That we could not foresee. Um so I don't even want to speculate. What happened, but. It definitely turned into something. Um else entirely. I guess, you know, when we came before you guys and we were kind of charged with this. I I don't even know why we were before you, and I don't know why. We could possibly figure this out. I feel we should have always gone before the Board of Zoning Appeal and I'm not sure, it's kind of like we chased our tail back here today.
Okay.
And so that's an odd thing. We received a letter, um so after the final decision, we received a letter that um. The building department. The building department wanted us to tear down part of our property, and then our even our home, which we didn't add on to our home, we just took the existing footprint. And um that that was. Could possibly be torn down. So that was a scare on top of a concern. Um. During this process, I want to be clear that obviously we informed the building department, we had to hire the attorney. If if they could have communicated with that person at that time, we would have been fine with that. We went to the neighbors, you know, whatever they wanted to do. I really don't understand what happened there at all, but I've never, aside from going to their doors, one person home and the other family not home. There's been no communication really. Um but when it was realized that we were, our home was inside of this, um and that we had this big problem. We decided not to obviously go for the sixteen foot deck that we had requested, and we dialed it back to. This smaller, what was existing there before, but had been torn away. So kind of this non-conforming or whatever thing that was already there. I know it looks big to people, um and we've heard things over this period of time, it's. The footprint out on this lower patio. It's not much bigger than the concrete patio steps, fence, and the big. Right box that was attached to the house, but it's two stories, so it looks humongous, I'm sure, in comparison. I guess I'm here tonight to. Um ask you to cancel that order and work with us to find some sort of compromise. And resolve. This property line issue as well, so for me, it's always been kind of fairness, you know, we were upfront with everybody. Um but then also to resolve this problem, because. From what the surveyor said, and then of course, the attorney, this is something that can crop up down the road, so. Kind of two separate issues with the deck, yeah, of course. We wanted that, that was improved, part of the improvement of the home, and if you've ever been by it, it's very beautiful, and we'd like to get that done. Um but the other thing is this. Bad property line, and that definitely needs to be resolved as well.
The line put you in the.
It's now been deemed an easement, so when we came before you guys before, it was unknown what it was. You've said you didn't know what it was, and that we had to figure that out. Um through the course of the trial, they ended up. Extending the. The highway and capturing that piece of land, so that wasn't always. Part of that, but they did capture it, so for us, we've actually lost land. We could lose a corner of our house, and that all stemmed from coming here, trying to make moves, you know, improvements. So. I don't, I don't know how that happens, but I. Like to kind of just get to a point where we're, not to a point, I would like us to be moving forward, this officially resolved and us moving forward, get that project done. And start enjoying it.
On planning commission, B D A have come a few times. Man, ain't something that just happened, like you say, two or three years ago.
I know.
I still want to get your feet in the planning commission's pants.
I mean, it it's it's a it's a matter of, you know, protecting.
Mary's got someone this.
I feel like this has been a little bit. Represented wrong here. So. Uh from the planning commission side of things. Um we've never asked her to tear our house down. This was the letter that was sent to her, it's to tear the deck down. Um through their court proceedings, it's been affirmed by a judge, uh not once, but twice, they appealed it. Um that that is county property there.
We haven't appealed anything, we've never appealed anything.
And these are some pictures that were taken by those. Out there when he, when they did the survey, this is like the day after the survey. And the stakes, you can see where they're at. There is a few feet of the house that is in the right of way. Um at the planning commission meeting. They referred Miss Kleindance to come here to. Ask to negotiate with you possibly some sort of way of beating. The house, which.
Because it could be torn down, so I didn't interrupt, but that's where that came from.
I don't feel like anybody's asking her to tear her house down. The problem is that the deck was started and built without a permit, and it's completely in the right of way, as you can see. And she's been asked to tear it down, and she still has not complied with that.
I mean, this is. This is a fire line awful.
I think they're all. It's the one, the easements go between the lakefront and the roads.
This is actually.
Designated fire. This is.
Seven seven fifty.
That was just updated to be that, though, so it wasn't when this all started, that was not.
Survei that we hate, that you guys had um territorial, that's the new survey, yes.
This on the bottom, is that a concrete slab?
No, that's.
So I'm referring to these things here. Um that were on the house when we bought it. And the sidewalk going down, there's a fence, and then a lower patio also down. So when this was all tore off.
So this is about the, not so much the easement running from the lakefront to the road, it's more about the easement that runs the perimeter of lake.
And here's the tree right, and so all of these things have been here for decades, there's no way that concrete was dilapidating like that, that that. Brick box was falling off the house like that, this has been like that for decades, um and that all needed to come off. And.
You talking about this little stuff down here by the.
Yeah. But here's.
How far out is that?
Maybe ten feet total, something like that, I would have to measure it, but I'm guessing. But they have it like in that survey. The concrete out to here. So that was, that has never entered.
And I've seen the scale, it's certainly half the width. With that, that structure about the half width, with this deck. Just going off the line, you can see in pictures.
Yeah, the angles might be, I realized that when I was looking at it, but that has always been there, like we bought it as is. And that was there and didn't obstruct anything, now granted, it wasn't officially part of that easement then, but it was thought to be something that. Had to come here, um but that deck has been there for. A good two years, and it obviously hasn't obstructed any egress or ingress. Of, it's a highway easement, and that's what it's meant for, so people can pass through there.
I think the biggest thing is where you've done it when you asked not to. And you had no permit, and you still wanna hit.
That was an unregistered contractor too. That didn't work.
So I don't understand that, you said that at the last meeting, but when we, obviously, we were issued a permit, we said who we were using, and then that cropped up.
Issue to permit ever for this.
We were issued a permit to do the improvements on our home.
Not for the deck.
So not for the deck, so that's why we were going before the Board of Zoning Appeal for our sixteen foot deck, and then you called and said you didn't know what setbacks to ask for on the variance. And we should come here.
Too close, you can't ask for variance on property that's not yours.
I mean, believe me, I don't know why we went down this path to prove all this out, to lose land and. Do this, I don't get that, if that's something you guys were interested in, I feel like that would, you would do that, and we would just do. Our.
I don't see where it's losing land because it technically was not theirs.
So before the survey, there was the aerial maps, there was nothing in the plat room when you guys sent us there, and it was all aerial maps. And you had us as ten foot out, but it was unknown, so theoretically, we've lost ten feet.
Are you talking about our G I S mapping system?
I don't, it's the only information that was shared with us.
Because those maps can be skewed one way or the other, those are not ever. An accurate.
There's a disclaimer on those whenever you.
I don't know, we're, we were sent here for a reason, we didn't ask to come here, we asked to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals, we paid the two hundred dollars. That was never reimbursed, and I think we thought when this was done, it would either be a moot point, because the property lines would be.
Did you go like me? You're talking about.
We were.
Because she was asked to get a survey.
We did get a survey.
She never provided us with the survey. It was never done and provided to us.
We came here.
Therefore, she never got that hearing set, and then. Once it was determined through court that. Property that she's wanting to put the deck on to begin with, was not even hers to begin with, then. There was no point in asking for a variance. And anytime anyone applies in our office, there's, it's. Right there, but there's no reply.
When we stood before you two and a half years ago, if you would have said. We want you to figure out what this is, and at the end of this process, you may lose land, you may never be able to have even this this planter box or this patio. It's gonna cost you time, energy, and money, what we know. It doesn't make sense.
For instance, one of the neighbors out here has. A like patio paver. Um patio area. And that's also in the survey in the right of way, that patio paper area, though, we would consider a. Something that could be removed.
Right, and we've got that same problem.
We don't, um don't have a problem with it being there, really. It's not an issue, however, the deck is a permanent structure according to our ordinance, which is a problem.
There's so many.
It just started unfolding into this other piece with the quiet title and that. So my life's work and my husband's life's work, and he's unfortunately out of town, or he would be here, um. Is working with. Government entities, it's what we do, we work with health departments, we work with the Board of Animal Health, we work with the FDA. We understand the importance of following rules. Um and being respectful to form relationships to get work done. The, there was a mistake made when we realized we had this problem of this. In this piece of land, and that it was going to take time to. Ash out what that all meant. And we had a builder, I did say to dial it back to what we had torn out, and that's some of the pictures that I showed you today. And so it's not sixteen foot, we didn't get that, that's fine, but I kept the guy working, and I felt. I was replacing dilapidated and. Not useful with what we were looking for, but still in keeping with what was there, that that would be allowable, I think you called it a grandfathering.
Well, that's my biggest, I mean, this is like eight or ten foot here, but you doubled it, you made it like twenty foot.
No, it's maybe, no, we didn't even go on.
This is.
I think it's probably ten to twelve, but somebody would have to go out and measure.
Yeah.
So it very well may be a little bit bigger than what was existing there, but it's not much bigger, and that could be dialed back, so that's what.
You had even asked her not to build a new structure.
Well, she had no permit.
Yeah, she has no permit. Not to do the the sixteen foot to come before the Board of Zoning Appeal, but that became coming before the Plan Commission for whatever reason. So we never even got that opportunity, it just.
The opportunity ended up not being there, you know.
But we didn't know that back.
Well, we didn't know that either then.
It's not in the way.
What is the most accurate requirement of this? You.
The planning.
Did they build this without a permit, or? Was this uh uh something that, you know, a permit revocation after the fact?
No, they they built this without a permit with an unregistered contractor.
Okay, and your side of it is?
We told them who we were using, he's done work at the late before, so however that works.
Was all of that part of a permit application?
No.
Not, no.
Okay.
Alright, not exactly, like, not what we wanted, but. I.
What was it, what was in the permanent application?
This full improvement. And I look at that as.
Permanent application.
Well, yeah, but that wouldn't be included, this was not included in it. Because this regardless. If she wanted to add anything onto the back of their house, would have had to have got, get a variance, because of how close. The G I S mapping was showing that her property line already was. Because she has to be so far from that back property line, I believe it's ten feet in her zoning. And that's why she was referred to apply for a variance, and then further.
And then, and then that's when it was discovered that. Pro- property she was going to. Controlled by the county.
So we never made the application for the variance, because we got the call to come before this board instead, because the setbacks would be unknown, that's.
So. So what point was it discovered that? Your house is sitting in.
When the survey.
County controlled land.
Well, it wasn't considered county controlled land then, that's why you guys told us to pretty much figure it out.
Right. And we, and we figured that out through a survey you had done?
We have, you have that figured out after the court survey, that that would be part of. That upper part, seven fifty. And it's a highway easement, which is more walking, it sounds like highway, sounds like road.
Justin, I litigated the issue.
Okay.
Um I'm so. Cause I know we discussed this several times, so kind of the position you guys are in, and you guys do what you want, but I'll do this directed, but. If you want a portion of this property to. Go to them for purposes of either an extension of their their house, because there's two pieces to that, right, there's the house that you come, that that is someone encumbering, that the easement, the right of way to public highway. And then there's the deck, you guys are gonna have to vacate property in order to do that, and so, like Mary suggested, you can't really give a variance for property that doesn't belong to the property owner. But what you could do, if. You so desire, is you vacate a portion of that, one thousand six hundred and forty eight square foot that was part of the quiet title action filed by Mr. and Mrs. Kleindance. Uh up in Porter County, um so again, however you guys wanna treat, if you wanna vacate a portion of it to allow them, so there's no issues just with them, but. Also proceeding, property owners, that that the house is not within that right of way, they don't have to worry about when it's not you three, it's other people, someone's not gonna come in and say, hey, tear down a portion of your house. Right away, so, you know, that's a piece that I think everyone here, if you don't want to tear down a part of their house, everything down in agreement, it probably needs to happen. Whether or not you decide to vacate an additional portion of the property, which would allow them then to build a a deck on. That's up to you guys, but that's kind of the position you're in, because variance won't do it, you can't replat it, it needs to be a vacation of that, because. According to this December fourth order, for County Circuit Superior Court, that that one thousand six hundred and forty eight square foot is part of the public highway. The property is not abandoned, and the public may use the land, so you guys decide what you wanna do.
And this is part of that.
We found that out for you, like you asked us to do that, we, obviously, we don't need one thousand six hundred and forty eight, we need like ten feet or whatever, like. And that makes for a clean, would that make for a clean property line for us moving forward?
Sorry, I was, what was the question?
Like, if this were decided or clean, would that make for a clean property line for us moving forward?
I deferred, because I think Bob Lloyd did the survey, I'm not sure exactly what his line offhand shows, he'd have to.
And cannot be like a non-conforming.
She would still need a variance, though, to place the deck there, because she'd have to be ten feet. Off of that property line.
It'd be a vacation, then probably a variance after vacation, I'm sorry.
My biggest thing is there were people at Bass Lake, I just had to move ten inches. That was on our property, that's my biggest thing, you know what I mean, it's not fair to them, I'm gonna give you ten foot, and I took ten inches from these people.
So part of doing, I understand what you're saying, and I appreciate that, but part of us doing this was to get that clean property line. And this is completely unraveled into something that, granted, we bought in as his property, and that did make it affordable, and. But we still need to resolve that.
So this just highlights the whole, the whole issue around.
And people.
It's like a mess. When, when it comes to these, these flats. Plain and simple, I mean. When when it comes to these these flats, it's plain and simple. I mean, the whole, because there's different sections. Some sections have wider. Easements and setbacks off the off the lakefront. Uh we have a whole. Great big area outside of this that was.
And if I may, we had no idea. So obviously after we came before you and this all started to happen, we had no idea you guys have. These issues and of course now we've heard about the beach and all these things. So we literally became part of this can of worms, but we did not know that. And I want to be honest about that.
And this and from the get go, I I I've been pretty staunch in my. Wanted desire to enforce, you know, our easements and maintain what we had. Although there's been. Other, you know.
I don't.
Other ideas about, you know, abandoning easements, not just at Coos Lake, but at Bass Lake and.
You kind of set us on this path.
As much as as much of a mess as this is, I I don't think. You know, just letting things go.
That's what I said. It was now every meeting we're gonna have somebody here.
So a highway easement and just I watched people walk their dogs in and out. I watch people go to the lake. It when you hear highway, you're thinking road, but obviously there's the tree right in the middle of that. Um there's other patios, docks, other people have things.
I like Mary said, a lot of that's movable. I was out there. I went out there.
But what about if it's not movable? Is everybody going to have to?
Movable and they decide on the meeting, they're probably gonna have to move it.
They made a motion at the, I believe it was like August fifth meeting. You guys did.
But you gotta understand ours, like, I mean, like Mark saying too, we give it up, you know, and everybody, and next evening down the road.
We would be paying taxes on it, whatever portion. We have actually been paying a higher tax because it's been assessed with the improvement of the structure the last couple of years. We. We have been paying for that. Um we paid to go before the board and as long as that money is still good, we could go that route again. I. Hate to undo something that's been done when something's been there and it's not hindering or obstructing. People are still walking their dogs. Two and a half years later, it's not posed any problem. And there was something there before and that wasn't posing any problem. So. I understand it's messy and. I don't want to be part of messy, but I do want.
We we. For all of this, we still don't have a good answer to. You know. The rights that folks have. To the lakefront directly in front of their property and the rights of the public. To the area defined around the lake. As it was originally flat.
So people are walking. All of that and we're up here like it's.
I hate it for you, but my opinion, we can't we can't give up that way. I well, I don't think we can give it. For free. I don't see you do that. And like I say, I just made them people move out of Bass Lake.
Right.
So now they're gonna come back to us. We say you give it to her.
Yeah.
But if you wanted to surrender it or whatever the terminology is, a portion of it, because we had something there. When we bought that property, there's the sidewalk. There's the upper, what was the concrete patio and there was the flower boxes. I mean, no one said, hey, look, if this. We're interested in this land. If it's ours, you know, you're gonna have to take all this stuff out like I. That was not conveyed. I think the last thing you said to me was, do you have any other questions? I had no idea what questions to ask. Like, we're not trying to get something for nothing. We're just trying to beautify. We kept the footprint of that original cottage. We want to get out there and get that job finished and we want to enjoy it. It's probably an eyesore for all the neighbors. It's been half sided. For two and a half years.
Sound like when you did start on it, did you did they not ask you to stop?
We did stop then. We got the like a stop order or whatever. Yeah, but we had to stop the whole project.
Alright. But I mean, it's not a patio. There there was a real fall and everything. So I mean, it's not just a patio out there. You know what I'm saying?
I think part of, you know, we realized that some of it might have to be scaled back. I just assumed it would be. The size that was the stuff that was there because it was if. You want to say it was an easement or it is an easement now, it can still be nonconforming in the space and that's how they have it on our. Parcel card. It says it like right up there in the corner that there's nonconforming. Things. Um but. I still need a clean, like, I don't want to keep going on like this. I don't want my kids be sitting here, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now or whoever it may be. Like this is a generational investment for us. We feel really privileged to have it even with the state it's in right now. Um but we do want to move forward. And if we need to shave off ten inches. And go before the board and do that, that's perfectly fine and they can reuse the material somewhere else, but. You know, we've.
But you guys have said the whole area and right away, right?
We did.
Yeah, and part of the house.
Yeah, because the.
That is a little bit of the house.
Which the house I got, I'll give it that there, you know, I mean.
Yeah.
And like I was saying, the Planning Commission, they affirmed their order. Do have the deck tore down and they. Oh. Stated to her that they suggested to come to you guys. To see about what they could possibly do about obtaining the property that. The home portion is into the right of way.
And I'm definitely trying to salvage it all.
I would on on the home itself, but I mean, the whole deck and everything or not. You know, because the home was built, who know, you know, whatever. And if they messed up, put it in, I understand that. I want to ask you to tear your home down.
That should have been quite, I mean, how this is just as old and this is just as old. And there's, yeah, you know, this down there and that's what was up above and this sidewalk leads to it back then. It's just we made it better. So the other issue is before it gets decided um what. These steps, these were the steps that are like in this picture right here and there's concrete, but you can't see it just because of the angle and of course that fence on the side. All of those things that we took off, those were holding the earth. There's a big hill that rolls down there. That is all eroding away. Um I had planned that that would just be some steps going up to the next level and maybe a flower box or something like sideways to help hold that in and look good, but. It's all it's if you go out there now, it's it's going.
Yes, I need to look at them just as much as I do. I'm sorry.
I've seen him. I didn't go up.
But there was stuff out there, so I just feel like. I feel like we went down this path per your request.
So we can figure out where things were where they were.
And like we're being punished in some way.
It's not a it's not a punishment. It's just the what we discovered was. Not.
But.
Uh favorable to to your position.
Right, but why are we discovering that for you? Like if that's, I don't understand that.
It's without, I would say the theory behind that is it's. Motivated by your desire to.
Right.
Make changes.
Yeah. Well, that is what motivated it. Yeah.
Yeah.
So while I was brought for you guys back then, did they ever come back to you and say this is what we found? Like the odd thing that they have.
It became a lawsuit.
Yeah.
But not. Like it sounds, I've never been in a lawsuit, so that sounded very serious to me, but they explained um. At the attorney's office that when you're formally doing something, it's a lawsuit like that's just so informal. But then that became, I believe the county might have like countered sued us. So that was a bizarre moment in time where it's like, what's happening right now? And then other things started cropping up that. Like I said, I don't know.
Yes.
I don't know.
It's hard to flush that out when we don't have the record, the written record in front of us.
Because we were, we have taken everyone's advice. We took your advice.
No.
Then we took the surveyor's advice and then we took the attorney's advice and these are everybody's professionals. This is what you do. Like I said, we're used to working with people, having these relationships.
And had things been found.
I just feel there's a compromise within this.
There should be. What is it? That's the fun part.
Well, can this be discussed and then revisited? And then. I come back or what?
So I'm. And nothing against you. I'm totally against the the patio on that. I'm okay with the house and then giving you the little land or whatever you said, not on the, you know, the deed or whatever.
But what does that mean for us? Like people can come up to the back of our home? I guess I don't understand.
Yeah.
What's happening here?
An even.
And then what about the rest of the people? So we can just put something that can be easily removed? That's what you're saying.
What's the best way? Re uh and even.
So what's the difference? What's.
Rights to access in this case.
But that's what I'm saying. If you understand, if I let you do this, then everybody, every meeting, I'm gonna have someone here.
So then it would just be a floating deck instead of a.
Whatever the.
Deck, but it.
The planning or he comes up with. That's why we got them bored. So that was my opinion. I would leave it up to them.
And that's where we thought we were headed, but then we came into this. Yeah.
Yeah, Mark, I'm not sure what kind of nonpermanent structure can be on there. I guess I'll refer to her offices to what what that. If if there is a nonpermanent structure can be placed, because I don't know. I'm just.
Yeah, so.
As far as.
We'd still be going back to like. Something like, yeah.
Get given, given the way the easements are laid out and. The example of. Somebody just walking around. Exerting their rights as a member of the public to this public easement. How do we? Um.
Well, this is probably.
Put that express that clearly.
Well, this is probably an unfair question, but has it happened yet? Because they've been living there for a long time and the public. I mean, presumably has had rights to that public highway.
It's similar to, I mean. Like you was uh similar to what we were dealing with. With um. Starting with an H. Remember this uh. At at Coos Lake, it was like the the subdivision is supposed to have it lakefront access in front of people's houses on the lake.
Feet or something. I think I read that along the way.
Yeah.
I got that.
I know, I mean.
Like four feet or something.
I mean, and even that, even in that mess, I don't know that we've. I don't sort it out as clearly as it should be.
I mean, this is kind of where legal separate separates from like legally speaking, can somebody will, can somebody use the public right? Sure they can.
Yeah.
I know that makes property owners uncomfortable, but you also bought a house.
We bought it.
Close to a property.
Yeah, and we. We're okay with people walking along the lake. I I'm sure there's something about how many feet. That I believe I read that. There's so many feet and people walk their dogs and people put folks in there. Yeah, we have no issue with that. That's I'm just.
Like you saying, it's ever happened before. I have had a lot of calls from that.
Yeah, I wouldn't want somebody peering in my windows either if I was close to a property line. I again, that we're we're legal separates from. What should you do? I guess what should you guys do? You guys tell me, I'll make it happen, but um yeah, so long as. So long as there's a something's part of a public right of way, somebody can walk along that public right of way if it's right next to their window. Maybe.
I like having the barrier of the beautiful deck personally. And like I said, there and you see in the pictures, there was something there before. And it's not keeping people from the lake.
That. Problem with.
And we are not trying to keep anybody from the lake.
Problem with that is. And and if I'm wrong, I need to be refuted, but it it sounds as though. That deck was built without. A permit being issued for that to be built. And that's. That's the real problem we're sitting at facing is.
I felt.
Do we do we allow that? To continue to exist in. In this. Use of property that is. Under our control.
I felt we were grandfathered with that amount of space. That was prior to finding out. This was when we were still in the process, right? So I felt we had that much space at least. And depending on how things turned out, I don't know if anyone knew it was going to turn out this way.
No, we didn't. That's why we went down, we went down.
Yeah, but.
We had to do that in order to find.
I feel we're a special case and I do feel there could be a compromise there. Um. I know we bought in as his property and I know we changed what was existing of what we bought, um but we had that when we bought it.
Yeah, but that's. And what you had. When you bought isn't so much the issue. It's what you added on afterwards without.
It's like this. That wasn't permanent either, you know.
Yeah, that's not.
Oh, that was permanent.
That's a that's a it's a landscaping feature.
Right.
It was attached to the house.
Yeah.
But that's what you're saying, like grandfather, I mean, how do you? The water, the tent, you know what I'm saying?
I mean, I mean, yeah, unless there's. Something showing, you know. An actual engineer drawing that shows.
I mean.
How how far that extended and and we are well past that point.
I think they got that out of their little survey right there. And then it shows the the north south walk and then it shows the east west. And I did, I sent you guys some stuff via email, but.
I got it just before I got.
Okay, yeah, sorry about that. That way it won't take so much time.
The deck is the problem. Deck is the problem.
Here's what I would do, which I'm only one. I suggest you tear the deck and stuff down like you would ask. You could put a uh. Six by six thing by the doors, you know, with steps so you can still use that. I'm not gonna ask you to miss your door, even though it was done without a permit.
Not the the doors were done with the permit.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying.
Obviously, we were pretty.
You didn't have no place to go up.
We didn't know that then, though. We didn't know that.
My opinion, my opinions, if that stuff comes off. For the planning commission allow you a six by six. Deck or whatever, come out your doors with the ladder, with the ladder. And the rest of the police.
Well. We need. And I kind of prefer pictures and drawings and. Things close to this, a little more detailed.
Yeah, but you took that to vacate that property. For the house.
Yes, for the house, for the house.
What does that mean? Just real quick.
Even if she did a six by six deck. Or whatever.
That's what I'd like to s-
You know what I'm saying?
That's what I'd like to see in a request is. Uh a a clear drawing of what. The ultimate instruction. Is going to look like before you do it, before you do it. So we can determine. How much? To surrender or vacate if we decide because.
And what does that mean? Sorry to interrupt. What does that mean when you say that?
When you say that, it's it's the part of our easement that not only your house sits in, but that your. Balcony porch deck. Thing sits in and any other. Steps or concrete features you intend to add.
Yeah, not con- concrete came out and that's obviously a permanent thing. Like they had to jackhammer all that out.
Right, I'm. Past the point of what was there. I'm what we planned to do. I want to know what you want to do before you do it. That way we can decide. What if any? Portion of the property we control that we will vacate.
And does that mean we use it or does that mean?
The last thing the county is gonna give it to.
Once, once we see what what your plans are and once we decide. What if anything we will vacate, we will vacate it. And surrender it to you. Is that the right language?
Yeah, typically in other towns that have vacated property, what we do is we require the petitioner to get a survey, the portion they want to vacate because the auditor probably is not going to accept it unless there's a meets and bounds description. Uh so what Mrs. Klein does will probably have to do, if you want to do what other towns do, she'll have to hire an attorney to prepare the ordinance, prepare the survey. And also make sure all the mailings are right because. And also make sure all the mailings are right, because it, you know, it requires passage of, of an ordinance or a resolution to vacate that property. It'll have to come before you all, but what you don't want to do is since you're giving away property effectively is pay to give away property, you want the petitioner to do that.
Isn't that what we just did though, pretty much?
No, because they're wanting something, they're wanting something different than, than the survey that you had. You're, you're, you're gonna actually have to have surveyed out the portion that they're willing to vacate.
But like all the letters that went out to the neighbors and stuff and isn't that kind of the same idea?
Not sure what portion you're talking about. I'm not sure.
At the beginning of the process, yeah.
Um, if it was part of. No, if, if it was part of the lawsuit, that wasn't part of it, if it was part of the initial. Petition, that's not part of it. This is a wholly separate thing, so.
Maybe what should have been done to begin with. So part of being here tonight is it's been a huge learning curve.
Yeah.
Okay?
All of us.
And it's not going to be the end of the world, what, however it goes down. And like I said, we're still very happy to have this property. Um, but I will say, like, knowing a better path or a clear path.
That would have been so much nicer had it been known.
Because we would be sitting on that deck right now, I think.
And that's what I'm saying, it's not against Mark or nothing, but remember he just wants to.
Right, I'm just, I'm just proposing.
What's happening?
Yes, like we might vacate.
Uh, and that's, and that's why I stress, make sure you give this to us before you do anything.
Yeah.
Because. It'll be a decision made later. If we go with what you propose, and we compromise, or if we just go back to. What Don wants to do and just give you the piece that your house is already sitting.
And that's what I'm saying.
And I understand now.
But even though you spend all the money like Justin's saying. They're still, Mark's only one, there's three of them.
For risk.
Right.
Oh, wait, what?
If you're gonna commission a survey, you know, because what you're doing is you're just a petition.
Absolutely clear. If she's gonna take. Take an action based on, I'm just saying and, and.
But this is kind of like the same thing again.
Same. I think we're, we've an agreement to give her a little more time.
Yeah.
I personally will not. Budge on my thing. But I'm only one.
Talk to your attorney, talk to your attorney and, and see what he recommends moving forward. Because I'm sure he's done.
This isn't helping me right now, though. Like this isn't. It's still not resolved and.
Yeah.
Is there anything you want to say or do?
There's no.
Usually, um, these, we've never vacated any of them, so.
Okay.
Since I've been around.
Well, maybe.
And then. So. If we're tired of this and decide to tear that deck down. But you're saying you'll fix the corner of the house. What does that mean?
That will, will give you, I guess, that. Portion, whatever your house, if you put on our property, whatever. Since your house been there for fifty years or whatever.
Yeah.
I would. Vote to give that.
Does that have to be all of this prepared and stuff too?
The corner of the house would have to be. Yeah, unless, unless the auditor will accept a legal description without a meets and bounds legal description, sometimes they allow it, so. This is a, a property lines are like open up Pandora, Pandora's box. I'm sure there's a hundred other properties around Coons and Bass Lake that did this, so.
So, and that's what I'm saying, that's why I'm not trying to be mean to you or nothing, or you.
Probably, but. So. This type of situation is probably.
And so, right, so given what all I just said.
What, feel like anything is happening?
Yeah, give it, well, we're, we're, I'm about to backtrack quite a bit right now.
Oh, come on.
Well. I'll say, because I laid out what I thought was reasonable.
Yeah.
Like Danny said, there's three of us. And. This is going to drag on a bit. I'm not going to be here first of the year. So it would be more productive. To get their opinions. On what you should do rather than listening to anything that I've. Said or laid out as a plan forward.
I don't necessarily. Know what that means, I guess, but what about our permit? So what about finishing our home aside from this? If we're gonna have somebody. I'll tell him, he's still.
We can't issue any on that though right now. Until the deck's down.
Well, how do we tear the deck down? I mean, we're not, we don't need a permit for that.
They've sent you a letter asking you to tear it down, it's.
Hold on. Yeah. And then what?
That point, then you could come in and get a permit for something else that you're wanting to do with the house.
And then what about having this space? Just use something that's not, that can be removed, is what you said, what the other neighbors have.
Like desire business stuff, I would say.
And the pavers, like what's acceptable? Can I hear some? Either I'm gonna go the way, that way and put it all together to get the corner of the house fixed, and maybe if I'm gonna have to do all that, then you just go for the six foot or whatever you've. Was said, or we're gonna go the way you said, but what is acceptable? That helps make the decision, knowing these things, like what your neighbors have, like.
Unmovable patio, or something like that.
Like six foot. If it comes to our road or whatever, I'm not saying we're gonna give you that land, we're gonna let you use it.
Yeah.
Door, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
But I'm not gonna vacate, in my opinion, I'm not gonna vacate. And that, like we say, it's three of us.
Yeah.
Just so you know.
Yeah. So an easement. Or a use of land.
Uh. Owned, owned by the county, right? The easements.
It's an easement for a public highway.
Yes.
But what about the land underneath of it?
I'm not understanding what you're asking.
So an easement is like a use of land, but who owns the land?
Well, I guess the property owner who abuts the easement, probably. It's an easement in favor of a public right of way, just like, uh, just like the, the light poles that you see there along the. Along the state highway or a county highway. Um, they're, they're county highway, but someone can run the easement, pull that easement like a nip scale or something, and you can't pay the use of that easement. So. The, the next question is, is it a lot of use to the person that abuts it? Probably not. So.
Or if it were to be surrendered or abandoned, then it would be ours to do. Where?
Sure, if there's.
Just not this day.
If there's an abandoned.
Yeah, just not this day.
I don't, I, I hope you understand, you know.
I mean, it's, yeah, it's been two and a half years. I've learned a lot, I mean, let's be real, but I still kind of confusing wherever at tonight, but I do.
So. Are we wanting to come back to another meeting?
Well, I mean, it's.
Those who know what do.
And, and well, what's, what's most likely to be approved? When she comes back?
What I said is what I'm. Yeah.
Which I mean, we've already said the deck's gotta be tore down.
Right.
Okay. I mean, we need to. See that accomplished.
Okay, sure.
Will that come down and go back to them, get your new permit to finish your house, like you said?
Well, the permit comes after we decide. How much we're gonna vacate, right?
But we could still work on the rest of the house. Like the whole thing is installed out, which is very unfortunate.
Yeah, I mean, as soon as the debt came down, I mean, if there's stuff she needs to do to the rest of the house, we'd issue her a permit. The vacation of. You know, but two or three feet of the house that's in the right of way, I mean, that's a process, not gonna happen.
Right, so we don't want to hold her, that's what I'm saying.
Right, and she'd have to get a survey.
And then what about our guy? So our guy has. We told you guys we were using.
He's gonna be promoted through the council.
And he has done work on the lake before, that's how we.
Just because he's done work on the lake before doesn't.
No, I'm just saying, so what, he just needs to come in.
He needs to register with us. There's our stuff he needs to do, he needs to provide, for instance, like insurance, uh.
Yeah, he doesn't, he's on, he doesn't drive, so.
I have.
I know.
Of Amish contractors that are registered, okay? But they have ways of, yeah, they have ways of doing that. Oh. Like I said, you'd have to give me his name, I'd look it up and see if they're registered. At the time when this was done. They were not.
And we didn't know that, because we got our permits, so I don't know how that.
Tell you right now, I have it up in my head if they've ever come in and registered sometime.
They help it.
Uh, kind of.
Yeah. That's what it sounded like, that come down, then you go let them get another permit. Once you're ready, then you come back, tell us what you want, your plans already, tell them.
So I'm not gonna roll the dice on the vacate thing.
No, I wouldn't do that.
I, I say, and nothing against you, I, I will not vacate. I will for your house. Absolutely for your house, I will not.
And then what will that look like? Like, how much space or do I?
I guess, like, just, did you talk to your lawyer?
So we still have to do that?
Whatever, whatever footage you need for that, for that house, so that your house is not empty right away.
But why do we need to do that?
It might be legal. Otherwise.
To say.
Gonna come and do the same thing.
But I mean, if you want it to read a certain way and there's cer- you know what I mean, like? Is that something you guys can do and?
Well, because the alternate is. We tell you to demolish that piece of the house that's on our property. That's why it's on you to.
Right.
Go through all these steps.
That had to be surveyed out and then get those specs and. So we know what has to be vacated off of the easement.
That makes sense.
I mean, I hear what you're saying. I understand what needs to be done, but it doesn't make sense that we started this two and a half years ago to end up here today. Okay, do you want me to take?
Yeah, whatever.
But I'm sorry, it took so much time. Yeah.
About all hers or?
It's fine, wait, what is it? She, you bring it out. Thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
John, you got, you hearing us?
We're letting him leave for four times.
Ye- yes, sir, I'm here, Mr. Bankly.
Go ahead with your request.
Thank you, sir. Can you guys, can you gentlemen, everybody hear me okay?
Yep, yep.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Uh, commissioners and all, I, I'm formally requesting a proposal. To utilize fifty thousand dollars of restricted funds. From the county opioid settlement for calendar year twenty twenty-five coming up. This would allow our agency court services to continue to utilize the evidence-based treatment services. Provided by Mr. Tim Gearhart and his associate. Uh, what they do is they provide in-house services to justice-involved individuals. Under our supervision with substance use disorders and mental health-related conditions. Uh, so that's my request for tonight. Gentlemen, please and thank you.
Have you talked to your board about it, Sean?
Uh, well, we did last year, this, we, I, the initial proposal was back in twenty twenty-three. I requested, uh, funding for twenty twenty-four. The commissioners and county council had both approved it. And so, uh, the board's aware of this. Our advisory board. Uh, but it was my understanding, since the, the funds come out of the opioid, uh, settlement grant, it requires commissioners' approval as well as county council, was my understanding.
Well, can we? I'll make the motion to approve the request and use of the. Restricted act of funds. As presented.
Okay, I'll second. On third.
Alright.
You know, was that all you had, Sean?
Uh, yes, sir, that's all I have. Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Tom was actually next on the list. Tom Shaplin.
Okay, come on, Tom. Sorry about that, you're fine.
Thanks, guys. Uh, hopefully I won't be here an hour.
Better not be. No doubt.
Okay, uh. Um, too bad Mr. Tran left. Uh, I did have him look at this. Uh. He, he. He didn't make any changes, he didn't let me know if it was. If it was, uh. Bad or good. Uh, I'm not trying to reinvent, reinvent the wheel. I went through, um, at least a half dozen different counties. On, uh. On the, uh. On the internet, looking at different ordinance that they had for survey. To try and protect our monuments. From either vandalism or being destroyed. Any, any, anything in that realm. Uh, I found it's. Somewhere in disarray, we're trying to get them fixed. It takes time, but. I just want to make sure that. No matter who's in this office. That they're, they're protected. And that's what I came up with and as you, that's, that's the specs by territorial engineers, how they're to be put in. And then on the bottom, the last, the last two pages is where I got the, uh. Ordinance from. I just, like I said, I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel, I just kind of. Copied theirs.
Um.
This for your corner.
This is for the section corners yesterday.
And what, the. Drawing that was done up. The, as I've seen. Looks like. Uh, boxes with the markers. At the warehouse. Those conform to that?
Yeah, that's, that's the Harrison monument, that's how they come.
Okay.
Uh. And, uh, that's how they're put in. And that's the standard that I'll use from territorial, my Bob. And this should be standard from, if we do a paving job or. If we need to replace them, if we've replaced monuments, that's how we've been doing it. Near about a quarter inch.
No, no more truck axles.
Uh, if, if you want to donate a few, um, use them.
No.
No, that's. They, they used them in the passes.
It was a whole new order.
Yes, and I don't. Tell you the truth, I've asked and I don't even know if we have one. And I know it needs to go through you guys, then it needs to go through a public hearing. Uh, I guess it needs to be publicized. Uh, it, it's got its steps, it's got its steps, I know that, and that's no problem.
Let me do the first reading tonight.
Okay.
Most, I'm gonna move forward. I'll make that motion.
Second, second.
My favorite.
Alright.
Mike Lane, we need to sign this tonight, we told, it's all three done.
I think it needs to wait till it's the second reading.
Or the third. Yeah, probably the third, too.
Uh, the second one is, uh, I've been. Discussing this with Mr. Bankly and Mr. Pearman. Uh, they're at the, uh, RV park. Uh, you know. Everybody's aware of all the water we've had. Especially back in July.
Campground and Bass Lake.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, how it. Over the years, it's flooded numerously, and, uh, you guys have had problems with pumps and having to replace pumps cost you thousands of dollars. Well, we'll come up with a, a, a small proposal. Uh, to run the water backwards. Per se. And what I mean by that is you have the Johnson arm out there. It's a county-regulated ditch and you have the Johnson ditch. They both drain, are supposed to drain into the Bass Lake. Well, they don't. I had a contractor out there. He more or less voted router. Up to the. Area where you have the. Oh, the trees and everything out there. We got about eighty feet and we came to a, a dead end, just like hitting a brick wall. Uh, when he did this, he also had, uh, an estimate where he could do a locate. So we were able to locate. The line. And find out how far we went. We went eighty feet and like I said, we just. Either the tiles collapse or it's full of roots. Either the tiles collapse or it's full of roots, or both, we don't know without digging it up. So. It was brought to my attention that. If instead of going that way, which costs between forty and fifty grand to do. If we can take the water and run it. On the backside of the property, which the ground is naturally running. From a high spot to a low spot. Back at Mr. Shaw's property. Or Swanson, I'm sorry. He has a his own little ditch that runs to the Fred Mile Ditch.
And that's and that's unregulated.
Yeah, his is unregulated, running into a regulated ditch. My proposal is to run tile from the backside of the property after putting in a swell. Along where the campers are parked. On that, I guess be the south side of the campground. Where the Johnson arm number one is located, right now it's more like a depression in the ground. It's not even a ditch.
More like a swell.
There with those and we shot some, we shot some uh. Some uh. Elevation, thank you. And it. It goes real low to real high. So what I wanna do is. I've been told I can buy one of my contractors, he'd take, he has a blade that will make a a swell. And dig it, but we have to go around trees and this and that, and then at the end, at the end of there. There's a camper on the backside, put in a a five-foot concrete. Uh. Uh. Uh thing, a manhole. Two foot would catch the. I guess some leaves, dirt and everything else and the rest. Water would run in and uh for over fifteen-inch tile. Depending on what size we wanted to go, and it would run a tile all the way to that unregulated ditch, which is nearly a thousand feet away. It's a distance, but it all runs downhill. Because. As you can see some elevations on the on paperwork there. It's a five-foot drop from the back of the campground to this unregulated ditch.
And we won't be too long on the ditch.
Uh the ditch, we I was out there, I walked with uh with Dan Shannon, Dirt Works. We walked it last week Friday. Uh there's right now, there's water just sitting in there and it's turning green and all that good happy stuff. With the property. That right there is probably just as low as the ditch itself, so this is the the backside of his property. Probably gets damp and wet and holds water. It's two-inch solid for us. We can go, it don't cost us no more money to go with perforated tile with a sock than it would cost with regular wood or tile. So uh I got some numbers, I've made a few phone calls. Uh for the tiles around nineteen grand. For the uh catch basin, it's around a little over four thousand dollars. But that's me making phone calls, I don't know, I don't know the contractor, how he he might be able to get maybe a good discount, I don't know.
How much of the contractor have you asked?
I have one contractor, uh I'll set, he's got a proposal in there for about thirty-eight thousand plus. Uh. That's everything. Uh I reached out to uh Mr. Shannon, uh he wasn't. He was supposed to give me something, but I never got nothing, he said it's probably gonna run about three thirty thousand. So maybe a little bit more.
So this is unregulated drain here and then it's related?
Correct. Yeah, I've talked to both legal owners. The only thing we'd have to do is we'd have to either purchase the easement. Or we'd have to get with Justin, myself or whoever's in the office. And talk to the two property owners and see what we can come up with as far as a an agreement.
I think with that and we're dumping into a regulated drain, I think we'd have to go in front of the drainage board. Then they'd have to approve it since it's dumping into a regulated drain.
Uh on that one, Charlie, it's not gonna be ours. We're gonna, we're helping the park to do it. The park is still yours, the way I'm way I'm looking at it is. We're doing all this for the park and then when we're done, we'll give it to the park and they'll maintain it, but you're right, we. I don't know if we'd have to go in front of the drainage.
I believe they would.
I'm not.
Why don't you and then bring it back and we'll go that route.
We gotta, I think I have like a public hearing on it and stuff.
Well, I don't know if we'd have to have a public hearing on it, I have to I have to talk to uh Autumn and she said we didn't think we'd have to, because. We're going through already private property.
I know, but we're dumping into a regulated drain, I think that changes some stuff.
I'd have to ask her again.
Why don't you bring it to the drainage board?
I'll talk to them also.
And then.
But I wanted to bring it to you guys.
Material or that's it?
That's thirty-eight thousand is for material and everything. That's what he quoted. And I, like I said, and Shannon never got a chance to give me a an actual quote quote, but he was talking thirty grand or more. Uh I did reach out to uh to uh Kevin Falk. Uh and he was, he kind of backed off, he said it probably, he didn't think it would. Be worth his time.
That's all I got on it, I think I think it'd be best to go in front of the.
We will do that.
We yeah, we can.
And we just need to make sure that we have everything as far as agreements, you know, for throwing. Water into somebody else's property, ironed out before.
Yeah, and I I reached out to, I've reached out to and I talked to Mr. Grace and I've reached out and talked to uh. Uh uh Craig Coltyse over in Marshall County, they. He's done one, he said they did one years back. For uh one of our ditches over there off the total. Uh they didn't. They didn't use any, they didn't buy an easement, they did everything with with the property owner, I guess they did it through a contractor.
I was right there by the carpet place, I was, I think.
Exactly where, but he said. Quite a few years ago and then Mr. Coltyse said they've done something similar over there in Marshall County. And they didn't, they didn't really have to buy the easement, they just worked out a a deal with the property owner through the lawyer.
Uh sounds like a workable plan, we just need to hammer out the details.
Okay, and the last one is.
Uh we're gonna be here an hour.
I try not to, last one is I'm asking for uh some funding. For um to. Hold beavers and beaver dams and trees that are in ditches unregulated. Meaning there's no money in these ditches. Uh. There is a, there is a line item number. It's called the emergency maintenance, non. The estimated ditches. And right now there's what they, what we got in there is a hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents.
How much?
Uh we got a hundred dollars and twenty, a hundred and twenty-four dollars and some change.
So this.
Well, I mean, if it was mine, I would take care of it.
You know what I'm saying?
That's all in the mud ditch that's right there off of thirty-five, as you're going southbound, you look to your right, you'll see the Beaver Dam. Uh Mr. Parker is gonna work with the property owner. And he's gonna trap the beavers and the property owner's gonna pay us, but the property owner don't have the equipment to do the excavating.
Look, the it's the property owner's ditch, right?
No, it's our ditch, it's county ditch.
But it's unregulated.
But it's unregulated, correct.
I don't think that's right, Tom.
It's our ditch. There's no money in in there.
But it's on private property.
No, it's it it's it's our ditch. It's not private property, it runs through his property. Just like all these ditches run through somebody's property.
Right.
But I would think that would be up to the farmer, is what I'm saying.
No.
I mean, is this negatively impacting drainage to one of the regulated ditches?
No, but it is gonna impact this a county four fifty. Which you can see the water in the road from the last rain we just had.
Yeah.
And if you look at the other pictures, you can see the culvert, they just replaced those culverts. On thirty-five and it's three, you know, I mean, more than. Right. In the in the in the I C code, it asks for a thousand five hundred a year to be put into this line item number. But I'm gonna ask you guys for five thousand dollars. To take care of this one and to take care of the uh Ja- Jackson Schilling ditch, which it also has. Same problem.
Uh well, it's something we've never. For so it's.
And uh and and I agree with you. Uh I I did reach out to the highway department, they can't help me, because it's not. In a county road underneath a county culvert.
Yep.
And it's not. And what I understand it from reading the I C code and talks. And I I probably have to talk to Autumn again, but I don't, I do believe it's not the farmer's proper problem. It's it's a county problem.
I would like that more checked into, you know, I may give you money, it should be the farmer doing. That's mine, I mean.
It doesn't make sense to me if it's unregulated and I don't know why we've messed with it, but.
Well, that's. Yeah, and and that's. The only reason I'm asking for that much is because. I got, this one has to be taken care of. I got the Schilling, Jackson Schilling needs to be taken care of and we're getting into that season where. We have the beavers, the dams, and we have some ditches that are not funded and we have to. And to and to keep the water flowing and the and the farmers happy.
Is that something you bring to drainage board or just check?
Oh, being unregulated, I mean, usually the boards like messing with the regulated drains the most.
Check this a little more, Tom.
Okay. Yeah.
Come back to on that, I mean.
Yeah, I can do that.
I'll do that. It sounds like these property owners need to make friends with some trappers next to bevers, you know.
Well, that he's already. He's already reached out to Mr. Parker and uh and they've already worked out a deal as far as trapping the beaver. And the uh. Property owner is uh Megan Johnson, I don't know Stefan and Megan Johnson, I don't know if you know them. So that's that's on the Mars. That's what the problem is out there. And like I said, if we don't do nothing, four fifty, if we get any bad rain, it's gonna flood out. And you can see that for that little bit of rain we had.
Right.
I'll do a check and I'll check with Autumn.
Okay.
Okay.
I know he does it by the end of the meeting, he's not rushing this.
Okay, I just.
Uh next thing on the agenda is is there's myself, uh creating commissioner deputy position. This is not a new position, it's a position we've had all year, state board of accounts wants us to change to. Uh first deputy, so that's all we're doing. Don't need to motion, I have nothing, right?
No, I think you do.
Next one, Tom.
Yes, no, you do need to make a.
Oh, I do need, sorry. Mention for that.
Is that the?
And it's, we're doing the exact same thing, but state board of council, we're using a. I don't know what's fun, but state.
It was being paid out of county general and there was no appropriation for it.
So it needs to be considered a position. And this position will end January first.
Oh, so we we're gonna have that after.
I'll make the motion to approve this position to be um. To expire or not to exist past. January first, twenty twenty five.
No, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Now, Tom.
Hello, gentlemen. Thank you for having me.
Yep.
Um. I'm not gonna try to be here for an hour either.
Okay.
This I recommend, I only brought one copy, I'm sorry about that, I recommend you guys read that. Figure it out and and that might help you with your last claim that late. That might clarify some of it because it is a DJ law. These, on the other hand, are. From an appeal that was heard in this county. Not only we guys each, and so. Knight versus Darflinger. And. If you guys would go to page two. At the very bottom of page two, the last paragraph. The plot is divided broadly into ten blocks, which each block further divided into the number of locks. The plot also has certain areas adjacent to Coons Lake Mark Park. Okay? That refers to this park next to the Anderson House. Right here. Comes off of South Dairy, I believe that is, see that line?
Yep.
And that right there, that is all public parks. See that?
Park or the beach?
No, the beach is here.
Okay.
Kramer's Beach is here, then we'll get to Kramer's Beach. This park is non-existent, it's been taken over and encroached on by people with lot owners. All right, this park was donated in nineteen thirty-five to the public. Not the property owners, to the public, the surrounding public. Each one of these lines that I've highlighted, this one, this one, that is Cherokee Road or Kramer's Road to the beach. This little line right here is a walkthrough. It's been there since the eighteen hundreds, that's been there since eighteen, that one, that one, that one, that one. Almost all of them are gone, they were public easements, they were set out when this land was laid out. This is a statement. All right, this one and this one have plot numbers now. Because someone came in here and filed a quick claim deed on these plots. Now, what I'm trying to find out is. Who authorizes sell those? Who authorizes to sell the one known as the T Pier? Or this one right here that uh used to be where the public dock boat dock was, but coming off eleven hundred. There used to be a public boat dock there. That one's gone.
Do you know when them were?
Uh. Slowly being taken.
But I mean, is there any recently that you know of?
This one right here. This one right here was taken just I think this last year.
Really?
Yeah, and then and.
That comes really close to where we got a uh. That's, how close are we talking to Kramer's Beach here?
One block.
It's a whole block.
Like a block south. Now, that's the other thing, you guys know Kramer's Beach is supposed to be three hundred fifty foot long, right?
I don't personally know.
Originally donated, it was three hundred and fifty foot long.
Well, there's there's a ongoing case pertaining to that.
Exactly, see all that right there where the plot line splits from the lake and there's that line edge?
Yeah.
That is all supposed to be walked through. All right, all the way around, there's some spots that aren't. But this is supposed to be a park, that has all been blocked off, can't get to there. This has been taken over by somebody from Illinois fenced off. Either the adjacent property owners and there's one guy that lives back here somewhere that has a dock on there. That used to be called the T Pier. That's public access. They're all public accesses, they used to be fire lanes. All right, all right, before they were fire lanes, they were public walkers accesses, that's how people went and got their ice and learned for their. Root sellers. Access to water. But they're all around the lake, now when you get over here, that one's gone. All right, and when you cross into Marshall County, most of these are all gone too. But right here is the county line. All this, these ones, uh which ones, al- almost every single one of them's blocked. There's none of them left. No, hardly any, this one's gone, this one's gone. This one, I believe, is blocked off with a privacy fence. This is definitely gone, that's gone, that's gone, that's gone, that's gone, that's gone. Over here, past the island. They have this listed as a private neighborhood when you walk in, when you go through some pillars right. Yeah, there's pillars that says no trespassing private neighborhood, county, county plows and paves all the way to the lake. This, right here, is all public easement, it has all been encroached on, every bit of it. Now, I thought. You know, because somebody from the parks board was like, oh, well, you know, county, I'll cry out for it, no, the county didn't authorize. Uh you you can't sell public land unless it benefits the public. In this case, it's not benefiting anybody in the public. All these homeowners, like, there there's, I I I could, there's at least two hundred people. That used to have. Just public docks, they would share docks, like at Kramer's Beach, there was two to three docks down there where like ten different people used those docks. And now that's being taken away. All right, you can't, you can't move your boat, you know, you used to be able to, you could move your boats. Along Kramer's Beach, because all these people, all these lot owners have encroached on that property, you can't do that. You need to get out in front of my house, you can't fish here, or they put up a fence and they're blocking. It's been going on for years.
Right.
And uh, this, I, I'm. Pretty sick and I shouldn't even be here, but. Nobody else to do anything, and I'm tired of getting run off when I go to fish, you know, over here by the dam. Right here, this, this end right here, this little road. Right here, it's just a little dead end road, all this. Is all supposed to be public easement to here. That is one of the only ones that's left. That's still there, so-called fire lane, public.
Where's the new fishing spot they put off by the bridge?
Right here.
So that's considered public.
Yeah, that's supposed to be public too. Yeah, and it is, but you get more than. Three people down there, you ain't got no. Yeah, you can't, I can't climb around on them rocks and stuff, I fall in the lake. But it's, you know, the fishing there is not really. That great. But, and this is what I'm saying, you see how these plots are all marked off? There's supposed to be this easement all the way around, it's not supposed to be blocked, that was meant for the public. So you could walk down the shoreline, you could fish without her ask. I can't fish there without getting harassed. I, I'm getting tired of. I, so I, I used to not care because I had a boat. I don't have boat. But I recommend you guys read the Darth Linger Knight case and that, that sets the precedence for this part. And that park's not there, it's been taken. There's houses where, and, and, and this goes back to what the lady was saying before. Just because somebody built something there, don't mean they had the permission to. Because half these people have built, added on to their homes, decks, sunrooms. Whatever, balconies. And, and they didn't ask nobody. Their, their neighbor's not gonna tell on them, their neighbor's doing the same thing, you know, this, this right here, go, go, go there and look. Th- this is just, this would be just west of the Anderson home. It's off of South Dairy Coys. Okay, the Anderson home is on this very plot right here and it speaks of it in Knight versus Darth Linger. And you can find it on the map, that's supposed to be thirty foot wide right there. And it's supposed to be X hundred, a hundred many feet long and it curves around in a J in a hook. And this is like what we used to call Anderson Cove when we were kids, Anderson Hotels over here, Anderson's Home is here. And you can't get to none of it. If you do, you, oh, call the cops, what are you doing on our property, get off of here, you know, what do you think you're doing, jumping my fence and blah, 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 they're not even supposed to have a fence there. It's all been encroached on and the public, it's hurt the public. It, it, it causes the public to suffer. All of these people are supposed to have access to this water at every certain points. All of a sudden. Like I said, this was one of the last ones right here.
Yeah, that was this year.
I think it was this year or the end of last year, that one was taken and given a plot number.
On the way.
Oh, giving a plot number, you know what I mean? Exactly, it because they're filing quick claim deeds and.
But even then, you think, you know what I mean?
I'm gonna pull the patent. I'm gonna, I haven't got that far yet. I wanted to do that before I came in here, but I'm gonna pull the plaque on all these properties that are, that are missing. And you come to find out that there's a realtor involved. A few of them, I, I'd imagine so. And I imagine those realtors probably are. I'm just gonna leave it at that.
Right, I hear you.
You know? The people profiting from these sales. Are the same people that run the town. And that's, that's my guess, it's just my educated guess. I've given this map, a copy of this map to Mandy upstairs, she has it, so. So she has it, I gave it to her a couple of weeks ago. And you know, there's certain members of the Parks Board that are like, oh, that map ain't accurate, that map ain't true, that map is true. That map is made by the state. And it was given to everybody in Coons Lake because we had a lot of problems and a lot of issues left. You know, twenty, thirty years ago, where we were getting picked off public fishing land. And my grandfather was one of them, he stepped up and said, you, you guys can't keep doing this.
Predate the changes made to the dam.
Yes, it's before the, this is the original dam, this, this map was revised in eighty-three. January eighty-three. But it was based on the Aruda drawing of nineteen eighty-one.
That's another wrinkle in this is. The state made some changes in that area when they changed the dam.
They made it west of the dam, not in the lake itself. The only, the only difference is, is they took the old dam out and built a bigger one across the road. And everything that they changed.
There's, there's a spot.
Is west of the lake.
There's a spot adjacent to Simpson's and Frost that's not ours, it's the state's. I just can't remember where it is.
I see that, that's, you know, I, I have to look on the GSI or whatever website you guys have and that's. That's a whole nother. Kind of worms that, that shouldn't exist. But, you know, where are the plat books? Why did the plat books ever get taken out of the bottom of the courthouse and why weren't they ever kept in a room like they're supposed to be where you can view them?
To the treasure, or not the treasure, I'm sorry.
Plat books. That's the quote I got. The plat books are in storage warehouse, there was a fire, I've heard all kinds of things.
When I was here before, plat books were all stored in the auditor's office. When I came back, that was the first thing I asked, where is the plat books, they said, they put them in storage.
You know, this, this map done, it has some rocks, but it doesn't have the platinum. I have to go on you guys' Skyview website.
We have all of them.
Each plat for, for each of those missing easements. Figure out. Pull the plaque card, figure out who bought it, how much it paid for it, and sold it.
And yeah, exactly, who sold it?
Where did the money go?
I just say I can't see the county selling, I really.
Why would they?
Right, that's what I'm saying.
You know, that's not, it's not the fire department, you know, that they didn't own that, they used them, they were utilized by the fire department. That's how they got their ball. But those, those, they were there long before that.
Donnie, Teresa said there's a building across the street from the McDonald's that houses a lot of our plat books.
Talk about the, the office over there?
Okay, sorry.
I've been there, they have nothing.
I didn't know, I was thinking.
Uh, Saccharine Circle Society Museum may have some books. There's books down there, I'm not sure what they are.
But anyway, I wanted to bring this to you guys' attention, that way, you know, I'm not a lawyer. I'm just a citizen, I want to fish, I want to be left alone when I do fish. And I don't want. People from wherever, coming here, buying lakes, building decks and putting in patios where they don't belong, just because somebody else did it. Don't mean you get to do it. So, thank you gentlemen, I appreciate your time. Should I just come back and hope for an answer, or when you wanna call me?
What we're gonna do with it, you mean? I mean, we can look into it, but I can't promise you, but I'm sure it's gonna take.
I'll keep looking. Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
So. I wanna first and foremost just clear some things up, um, I know there's speculation. On how I got certain information, some people said information was leaked to me. Um, I was actually approached by, I'm, I'm gonna call this party the victim. I was approached by the victim and told of everything. I assured the victim that if she came forward with this information and brought it to the commissioners. That the commissioners would do the right thing. It's obvious, we know what we're talking about, so I just wanted to clear that up, that nobody leaked anything to me, that I brought it to the commissioners. Hoping that the commissioners would do the right thing. So now I'm here because I believe that the public deserves an answer or some answers as to. Um, the whole highway department. Affair, we'll, we'll use the word fair, highway department affair. What if any actions were taken and why it hasn't been addressed?
A personal matter, and it'll never get brought up to the public. By our rules and took care of the problem.
We didn't see anything happen.
It's a little bit of different change out there.
This isn't personal, this happened on county time. No, it wasn't, so you say nothing, we have. If it happens all county time, in county property, it's no longer a personal matter. A public matter because our. To that, so the public is not gonna see any. No accountability whatsoever. No accountability, alright.
Donna Underwood.
I actually have everything that I'm gonna say in writing, if you want to just read it or you want me to say it out loud. Okay, my name is Donna Underwood, I'm a twenty-nine year resident of Knox. Two years ago, I purchased a home at sixty-four fifty Dana Drive. There's a ditch at the back of my property that runs behind a total of four properties and empties into Bass Lake. I contacted Tom Show, Showton. He left. Um, about a year ago, just to see who maintains the ditch and it seemed to be overgrown, so he stated that it was not a county ditch. So fast forward to April of this past year, we had an unprecedented six to seven inches of rain. The ditch was filled to the top approximately five feet deep. At this time, I could see that the ditch did not drain and it took a few months to go down. The water became stagnant, smelly, a mosquito haven and a potential health hazard. So I called Tom again to see the flooded ditch, we proceeded to go to the courthouse where I was given paperwork showing that the ditch was. Inside my property lines, which you can see on this. Um, including that it is my responsibility to take care of it. Fast forward to September twenty-second this last month, we had twenty-two consecutive days without rain. The ditch was bone dry, this presented an ideal opportunity to at least find the grate, which apparently was causing it to drain improperly. My neighbor Frank. Jiglio, who has property adjacent to mine, called an excavator with a backhoe. The excavator had just begun to clear the ditch, okay? At this time. David Meslow's, Meslowitz, who owns the property behind the ditch. Drove across my yard, parked his car behind the backhoe and screamed, what the F are you doing, you are on my F-ing property, get off my property. His ranting and raging went on for some time until the excavator stopped digging, replaced the dirt. He had just moved. It was an ugly scene, I was terrified. I'm asking for your help, I would simply like to resolve the ditch problem through the correct channels. I do not want any trouble, just a solution, who do I go to? Alright, good, I'm at the right.
This is, where's, which ones, this is your property, right? Your house.
It comes all the way from back here and goes along all these properties, I'm the last one, this is where the. You know, the grate would be that allows the ditch to go across into the lake. So, um, I thought, this is what I was given by the recorder's office. To show that this is. They told me it's your property and that's what they gave me, so I'm like, okay, well, I wanna do what I need to do to make sure this is maintained.
That part, because I mean, you do your property, if the next guy don't do it, it's, you know what I mean, it's not really gonna help.
The problem is, I don't know what to do next.
That's what I'm saying, I think Charlie, he's been on the ditch.
Did they find the drain, the drain or the grate, what you're talking?
They didn't get him, he stopped him.
Okay, so they stopped him over here, over here now.
Donna, did I hear you right that the ditch is totally on your property?
Well, that's, that's, see this here, where it shows the, the. Ditch easement, and this, this part is what he brought to my. There is an actual warranty deed that states that this twenty-foot ditch, I didn't wanna ditch. It was, I don't wanna ditch, but I wanna find how to keep it, because now there's little trees that I could easily cut out of there.
I believe that's talking.
Dirt out of there.
Within that parcel for that tile. That's what that's talking, I believe. To maintain the tile. Tom, do you know anything on that tile?
I know it was, it was put in by Mister White. As deceased, uh, he. He owns the property in the back, he has a pond to help drain the field back there in the back. So, I assume that ditch is probably an outlet for that pond, which runs. Along there and then goes underneath the highway and out to the lake. And I haven't had a chance, but I was gonna go talk to the gentleman that gave her our gun.
So maybe if reading that right, I mean, that's showing that, I mean.
I, I thought the property line for her was in the middle of the ditch and his property line was in the middle of the ditch, so.
That says she's got an easement and the whole ditch is hers.
Well, I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
Is that what that, is that what I read?
But you know, if it was me and you were gonna clean my ditch, and you're gonna do it on your.
And within the instant. Parcel for the purpose of maintaining the above-sided tile.
Oh, that's just okay.
I mean, it's, I mean, that's pretty clear cut, there's.
I thought so too, but.
Is there an issue of, about? Alright, it goes in Little Lake, right? So. I really don't know what I need to do to. Find out how this tile is or where.
I don't know when it was installed.
Are there records of? Tile and going under the.
Hold the water.
I don't know.
Against the bottom line is, what, what needs to be done now, so that this is taken care of now, he's only been gone for a while, I know he used to take care of. Fair say, that's what I heard, I don't know that he used to take. Um, but I wanna, I want it to stay manageable. I am perfectly capable of myself of going down and cutting these little trees and keeping it, it's right on the back of my property, I want it to look nice. So.
Here, you're putting new tile in there, but if it's not drained, it's not.
That would be kind of the first thing, but I don't know. There is no.
No.
For this.
But that's what I say, it's all. The county did.
The tile would be the thing I'd question, because the way it's warded here, I mean, maintaining the tile. The tile would be the thing I'd question, cause the way it's warded here, I mean, maintaining the tile.
What is it? Is the state maintaining the tile or the property owner maintaining the tile?
Just because it's included in the property owner's deed.
Can I say something? I'm not an attorney, but back in the day, when something like this came up before the commissioner. The county attorney told them it was a civil matter. I hate to tell her that, but I think she's gonna have.
That was the first place my mind went when I read. As she was reading it.
A civil, like a civil lawsuit between you and that.
And if he's holding water back on you, that's a whole, I mean, that's, there's quite a bit to back that.
Well, tell me about ditches. I I know nothing about them. It was only the one time that we had that unprecedented seven inches of rain. If you just leave it. Does it, is it naturally going to do whatever it needs to do? Like will the water just recede and?
It'll find somewhere to go. If it's plugged, it'll go out slowly. That's what it sound like though.
I'm I'm fine with that too. I thought it needed to be resolved, but if it doesn't.
If it's unregulated, I mean, there's, I mean, not much can be done with it. It'd be a private civil matter, but.
For the county, for us, there ain't much we can do for you.
But I mean, if he's holding, we've seen, you don't wanna hold water back on your neighbor.
But even if he is, he's gonna go to. Now, I would like.
Your 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 remedy does not lie with us.
People just leave it.
Well, that's like Charlie saying, if it holds the water back on you, then I'll. You know, if it comes up, stays high, gradually goes down a couple of days, you're fine.
Not a couple of days, it's about a month.
See, so waiting that long, I'd do, I'd try to.
So you probably are looking at. Finding a solution through legal counsel, not through us.
If you want it fixed, you know.
If it wait that long, you know, I mean, even with the hard rain, shit drain down in a couple of days.
Alright, well, I appreciate your help.
Sorry, I'm helping.
You mind if I keep these?
Alright, thank you.
Okay, you got Slim Garner and the claims.
I'll do the claims then, yeah.
Okay.
Set the man is first, September sixteen. Second, on favor. New motion sets payroll claim for nine twenty twenty four. Second. Mike, when I give the total was eighty nine thousand one ninety three sixty two.
Nine, one ninety three sixty two?
Yeah. New motion to set the payroll claim the three hundred and eighteen thousand six forty three forty eight. So, second. A second. Mike, when in the claims, I got a question on page nine. There's a bill for nineteen hundred and eleven dollars. For a lawyer's department.
That was Mandy hired a private, the recorder Mandy hired a private attorney. Over the emails that Justin Reisner said were missing and she hired her own attorney. We brought it before you because in the past, you had to have commissioners a permission to hire your own attorney.
Absolutely, and she did not come to a commission.
Oh, I didn't know. So that's, I didn't know whether she had or not, and I just wanted it to come before you.
I'd like to make a motion, we accept. Mine is the nineteen hundred and eleven dollar.
I like the motion for vendor claims, the amount of four thirty, four thousand. Four hundred thirty thousand, three hundred dollars, eight cents minus the one thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars. On line item zero one three six three four.
Jim Garner. Hopefully, that's all I have to say.
Anyhow, what's going on?
The clients.
Please, can I have it?
I thought it was your turn.
That's alright.
You good, Mike?
Alright, in light of what's going on with Hurricane Helena. I would like to send a crew down south. One, it'll cost us no money. FEMA will reimburse us for everything. Uh we don't have to pay the crews. They'll do user vacation time. Uh it won't cut us short. As far as labor. Uh the only thing we have to do is send an ambulance and pay for the initial fuel, which we do get reimbursed. There is sixteen Northwest Indiana units down there now. I think it'd be a great humanitarian. Deal to send someone down. Now, while I was looking into this. FEMA's reimbursing for the ambulance to go down also.
Reversing.
As in a weekly pay, basically renting an ambulance for a week.
Okay.
In this, what part are you going to?
Uh they'll be assigned to GMR and AMR, Global Medical Response and AMR, American Medical Response. Uh they'll be on their strike team. They're based out of North Carolina. But with the new supposed historical category five that they're presenting. They could end up in Florida.
Right.
Uh.
How long you plan on keeping them down?
Their minimum is seventy two hours. They could be down there for two weeks. That would be what I say is two weeks.
And you've already solicited volunteers for this?
I have. I've got four right now.
And it's guaranteed to get funds back from FEMA and everything, right?
Yep. Right here. I only make one copy. I just print it off quickly. Uh minimum seventy two hours. Payment is directly from GMR. It's not from FEMA, cause they're building FEMA.
I'm gonna say, cause I was the FEMA wanting help.
FEMA's almost out of money, but it's guaranteed payment on a forty five day net.
From not from.
Not from FEMA themselves. But it's a, could be started out with humanitarian and it also could benefit. Our needs also.
So will they reimburse the full people you're sending there? Are they gonna buy their own food?
Nope. They pay for their food, their lodging, their fuel. Uh even if FEMA doesn't pay for it, GMR AMR pays for it.
Which rig would you send then?
The transfer truck. Cause I can keep the other trip, the other one truck I have has the transfer truck is all this wealth.
So we can still function as.
We still function as normal. I mean, it just takes my reserve away. Uh cause the other one's ready to be retired, so.
That is my request.
It's still covered under us.
Right.
That's the only one that.
That's my question.
It's still covered. I did check with insurance company and they did approve, everything was down there.
Gonna say I would be okay with it if checked with the.
I talked to Kerry and Kerry talked to Bliss McKnight today. They're supposed to give me a, a insurance.
Writer.
A COI with a rider. For Bliss McKnight to submit, cause I have to submit that to GMR anyway.
And my only thing, if it's more than two weeks, cause I know it's, you know.
Right, no, I can set the time limit.
That's what I'm saying.
I can set the time.
I I hate to say that.
We could actually send one down for two weeks and if everything's getting worse, we can turn around and send a second team down. So.
And bring them back.
And bring, oh yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Bring one back and then shift them out.
But of course, I need to clear that through.
Yes, that that'll come through you guys anyway.
It just worries me having something happen to the rig, but and the employees.
Yeah, but you said even the gas would be.
Uh even the gas, the food, the crews have the option to be paid by them.
I think it's a good thing to be able to do that.
Yeah, it started out being a humanitarian request and then when I found dug deeper into it, got it. We'll be making money instead of losing money, but somebody's gonna have to get paid even like. This came to light this morning.
And still helping out.
And still helping out. But I wanted to bring it to you guys. I got all my bases covered with the insurance. Uh and yeah, we'll run under our protocols like we always do.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. It's not gonna affect you on. Being insured on your ambulance stuff.
Matter of fact, three of the four that wanna go have to find their own coverage if they're on schedule somewhere near. So.
Right.
So.
When do you think?
I'm just waiting to hear approval from us. Uh it'd probably take about four to five days to get them ready to go. By that time, the main category five is coming through, should have already been through.
Right. Would you, uh, well, first, see what we're gonna do, make, anybody got a motion to add?
I'll make a motion when we prove Jim's request.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Alright. Thank you. Other than that?
Oh, get on the radio and ask. I mean, you got the ambulance filled up. See if you can get some water and toothpaste. Oil, drink, whatever they need.
I called WKBI in the morning.
Ask them to drop it off here. Hopefully, we get a few volunteers.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Donnie, I'd like to say, I don't, I just don't wanna bring anything up, but I respect you and I think you did the right thing by protecting your employee earlier. Or somebody trying to do something, and I wanna commend you for that. I think that was the right thing to do. Right, just me, just me saying it. That's just my opinion, but I think you protected her right. Everything else, I appreciate it. Mike, when you got it?
She's got something.
Somewhere we had issues with the cars deposits.
Yes.
And I showed you our deposit box outside tonight, drop off the payment. You realize definitely insecure. Um I looked into getting a different deposit box and put it in the wall outside my office. We have the sidewalk already coming up to the door. And by the window there, we would just clear out the hills. And put a retaining wall. Put a new sidewalk in, cut it through the wall so that it's going into the treasurer's office. Like the bank, can you put the night?
Just like a night.
Right. And to be secure, nobody could get in or whatever. And then on the inside, there'd be a nice cabinet that would stay locked. Only the treasurer would have access to that. Yeah. Larry Man come and give me a rough estimate on it, anywhere between four and six thousand.
Um with, with the fact that we have to do some excavating around.
Yes, he's gonna take the dirt out and haul away, smooth it all out, fix all that. And at the bottom of the building back here, you'll see the. Yeah, give me some bricks. Uh he's going to fix that to where it looks the same or very similar. So we don't have to paint it, cause there's tar or the dirt is to protect it, water barrier.
Did you say four to six thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
It may be a little extra for the box. I'm trying to find the cheapest one for those, and it would look something like this. Even have ones that's packed. But so the door on the outside would drop down like this, would go through the wall, you know, suddenly inside it would look like this. We can have it going into a lock and cabinet so that nobody can get into it but the treasurer.
And when, once you shut it, it's whatever's in there is gone.
Yeah, nobody could get into this from the outside. Only with the treasure with the key on the inside. Meaning that would be more secure for payments and then any other departments that would wanna make a night deposit. Directly to the office parks or any other departments that have. And there's a camera right outside the building up there, so it'd be watched by the camera. And that this is, I've been looking. And they're all about the same, about thirteen hundred for that.
And then you're gonna have your cabinet.
Right, gotta have the cabinet.
Now does that include that?
Yeah, I believe it comes with this too. But I did call and the lady's supposed to call back, cause. Where you could look online for the specs for this, it was not, it printed this and didn't have any. But they're about, they go all the way. Which I just. Want somebody to get that started so that it's done before.
Yeah, but if you would try to get us three estimates, I know sometimes that's hard, but if you do that. And the estimate of total, the sidewalk, the wall, the cabinet.
Was not all the work to be done.
And we've had it marked where it would be, so if you go out back of my office, you'll see the light mine. But it would not go straight on the sidewalk. It'll curve back towards the other road, like the water or something.
Yeah.
Move forward. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
You need a motion to.
Uh she's gonna get bids.
Yeah, she ain't got bids or nothing yet. Anybody else in the public? Go ahead.
There's a question on that. You can make multiple drops, right? So it's not like you put a drop in and it's closed.
Yeah, yeah. It's just like a bank.
Well.
Oh yeah, well, this won't be a fee or nothing, just anybody can walk up, drop the money and. And then you grow a little, they got anything? Anybody else? Most no journey.
Second.
Fine, you're.
Alright.